Hello, how good are you? Amanda, you don't have a township thing? Encourage it, my friend. All right, good evening. I'm going to call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township to order. If everyone can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Roll call?
Yes, roll call. And are we calling in Councilmember Bowlin?
After we do roll call.
Okay.
Trustee Kearns is absent. Trustee Bowlin is going to be called in remote. Trustee Montney.
Here.
Trustee Danenberger is absent. Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Hendricks.
Here.
Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Crumpler.
Here.
Trustee Malambe.
Here. Okay, so at this point, I think we need a motion to allow Councilmember Bowlin to participate remotely for due to illness.
I'll make that motion.
Second motion by trustee Ward and second by trustee Becker.
Okay, we're going to do roll call again. Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Hendricks.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Malambe.
Yes. Okay, trustee Bowlin, are you there?
I'm here, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Not for township.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move.
Okay, move by trustee Hendricks, seconded by trustee Crumpler. Are we using the clickers?
We can do roll call.
Clickers?
Okay, we can do clickers. Councilmember Bowlin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, how do you vote?
Oh. Yes. I just forget. Okay, so the item passes. No needs to announce. We're going to move on to the regular agenda and we are going to looking to pass the ordinance authorizing the reimplementation of a housing eviction relief efforts here, program for eligible residents of the City of Bloomington Township as requested by the City of Bloomington Township. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll move.
Okay, motion by trustee Hendricks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by trustee Montney. Any questions, discussions?
Last month, a couple weeks ago, did I mention something about this? I'm not sure. This began 2022, renewed in '23. We went full, the full budgeted amount in 2023 at $150,000. And we're just reinstating it now because Mid-Central Community Action ran out of funds through their CSPG for rental assistance and arrears. And so we're just taking it on because it doesn't exist anywhere else at this point.
Okay, well, that's a good initiative. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I think we're going to go ahead and vote.
Trustee Bowlin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Montney. I clicked a couple times. Yeah. Okay, well, either way, it passes, so we're good. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to reports by elected officials, starting with Supervisor Skilroot.
I don't believe I have anything in addition to what's already been listed there. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Okay, no questions. So we're going to move on to Township Assessor Scudder.
Good evening. The report I gave you was on a comparison of tax rates of other municipalities in McLean County. The thing to remember that the rate doesn't set the taxes, but the rate is a result of how much is levied to the amount of EAV that is available. So the rate doesn't get set. It's just calculated by what is needed and what is. So I just wanted to make clear that. And that the size of Bloomington to Normal, Normal has about 14,000 parcels and the City of Bloomington has right at 27,000 parcels to distribute the base. So, any questions?
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
I'll move adjourn.
Okay, trustee Ward, second by trustee.
Second. Becker.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are adjourned. And we'll see you in a few minutes.
Okay, good evening everyone. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council to order. If everyone could stand if able and for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Kearns here. Councilmember Bowen is gonna be remote. Councilmember Motney here. Councilmember Danenberger.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Here.
Councilmember Ward here. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Millouamblay.
Here. At this point, we're gonna need a motion to allow Councilmember Bowen to participate remotely due to illness.
I'll move.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hendricks.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Crumpler. Are we doing voice vote? Local call?
We can do voice vote.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Kearns, yes. Councilmember Motney, yes. Councilmember Danenberger.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Bowen, are you there?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're gonna move on to recognition and appointments, Madam Clerk.
We have one individual to recognize for a reappointment to the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, and that's Katie Rutter.
Okay, thank you Katie for, as you know, signing up again. And now, we're gonna move on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have eight public comment, and we have one that's remote, so we're gonna start with them after your statement.
Okay, so eight, so if everyone, I think, eight, oh well, yeah, so that's under the thirty, had to do the math in my head. Okay, public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased.
We're gonna do our remote participation first, and that's William Gustafson.
Okay, you are muted, Mr. Gustafson.
It's star six to unmute.
Can we maybe go to the next one?
Yep, we'll go to the next one and we can come back. Next up, we'll have Rebecca Mangles.
My name is Rebecca Mangles. I'm here to make a comment as a citizen. I have been struggling with rent. I know a lot of my cohort have as well. As you know, there's a ban on rent control in the state of Illinois, and there's a group of us named Lift the Ban Coalition that are trying to put a referendum question on the next local election to see whether residents of McLean County would be interested in lifting that ban on rent control so that people like myself can afford rent. Personally speaking, I have a master's from Illinois State. I'm working about two to three part-time jobs at the moment, and my rent is about two-hundred, excuse me, nine hundred, including utilities and fees. And I'm spending a majority of my income on rent, so about ninety percent of it goes to rent. My food comes from government assistance and food banks. And we would be very interested to have politicians on our side in order to support our citizens being able to actually afford rent in this county because if not, a lot of us are gonna start leaving. Thank you.
Next.
Next up, we have Rob Sampson.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you. I am Bob Sampson, resident of the East Gate neighborhood, and I'm here for two things. First, to thank you and the city staff again for accelerating the Colton, Lucas Colton, Locust Colton project after the flooding in 2021, and especially your action two years ago to really move it up. For the past two summers, the work has focused in our neighborhood, and I and others are delighted with the progress and improvement, which brings me to my second reason. During the past two summers, we've seen dust, traffic interruptions, all sorts of equipment up and down our streets. And importantly, we've seen firsthand the hard work of the Stark Construction crews. And I'm probably talking out of school, but it'll be between us. At least one time, one of our elderly residents was able to get her groceries taken into the house by the Stark crew because she couldn't get to the car to get them. Led by Brent Bowen, these crews have been considerate and helpful. We had nothing but good experiences with these workers. We admired their skills and determination to get the job done and done right. Even in a few cases, working after the sun had set. As the project moves south of us, let us, or let me express my appreciation and those of other neighbors for the city's response and the superior work, courtesy, and cooperativeness of Brent Benson and the other fine workers of Stark Construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Gary Lambert.
Good evening. My name is Gary Lambert. I think we should add to Rebecca's comments that we also place a ban on tax increases. It's getting tough. I became lawyer recently of a memo that our city manager circulated amongst the council asking for a tax increase for pensions, leaving the general fund to pursue other projects. That started back, to my knowledge, with Terry Renner in 2014 when he passed the first gas tax in August, I believe. I told him at the time, what you're doing is creating a slush fund. By taking things out of the general fund, that gives you opportunity to use that general fund for your special projects. It's happened over and over again. Second tax increases, funds dedicated for pavement, but we never see a reduction in the general fund. This latest one, I believe, was for a recommendation to add a tax increase for pension. Boy, doesn't that make it easy to sell to the public? We don't ask for tax increases for street scape, questionable purchases of the Owens property. It's always things that people have to have. We had a pool that needed to be replaced. What do we do? We've got a, I don't even know the word for it, modern-day miracle out there. Money is no object. The special projects, we've increased staff substantially over the past ten years. The last time that I can recall, pensions being a subject at least discussed publicly was approximately six years ago, maybe. And at that time, we were told that we were on a path through extra contributions to meet the city's obligations. I don't know what happened to the money, where it's gone. Something's wrong. Thank you.
Next up, we have August Nord.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is August Nord. I'm a precinct committeeman for Bloomington Precinct One. Last year, when the city closed Washington Street for the Never-Ending Nyco project, I noticed that people kept driving up to the construction zone and turning around, just checking to see if the street has been opened. After finding out that the closure would last a year, I asked for signs to be posted with an end date. I was told that the info is on the city website, and people can look it up themselves. Later on, when I canvassed my precinct, I learned that not many people know how to get the street closure updates. Last April, when Bloomington Heights was closed, I checked the site as instructed. It stated that the project would end July 31st. It is December 9th, and it is still closed. Here are the screenshots. I have every single one of them with the updates from the city site. In August, after the end date came and went, the site had the end as undetermined. In October, the site had no construction marked, and it showed the road as open. It wasn't. In November, the end date was December 14th, and a couple of days ago, it was updated to December 20th. Time will tell. As of today, the closure has been extended by one hundred and twenty days from the original estimate, costing people time and money in their daily commutes. One-minute trip has been extended to five if there's no traffic. But then, the construction on Market Street started, which is along the Market Detour, creating a bottleneck and extending the travel. creating a bottleneck and extending the travel time. Doesn't seem like there was much thought put into that decision. I believe that posting signs with an end date on long-term construction projects and actually completing work on time would help the community. I would also like to see an audit and a report done on the Bloomington Heights Road Project, the QuickTrip gas station closure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Sunny Garcia.
I don't think he's here.
All right, next up, we have Georgine Chisel.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. I'm Georgine Chisel. I live in Ward Two. And I as well am a precinct committee person for Bloomington. I'm here today to talk about and ask for support on the HB forty-one oh four bill to protect Illinois renters. Nearly half of Illinois renters pay more than a third of their income on rent. And twenty-six percent face severe burdens with housing costs consuming over half of their income. In McLean County alone, thirty-one percent of renters are severely rent burdened. Since 2019, Illinois has been surged by fifty-five percent, ranking the state fourth in the nation for rent increases. These rising costs are not just straining budgets, they're driving evictions and worsening homelessness. Each year, McLean County sees over seven hundred and fifty evictions filings, and nearly fifty-seven thousand are filed statewide, leaving close to twelve thousand people, including children, without stable housing. Other states have implemented policies to limit rent hikes. But Illinois renters are denied this option, excuse me, due to a statewide ban pushed by the powerful real estate lobbyists. HB forty-one oh four offers Illinois a way forward. This bill would allow communities to vote on lifting the rent control ban, giving local government the power to set fair limits on rent increases. HB forty-one oh four also protects renters from retaliation when they request safe habitable housing. Our coalition of everyday Illinoisans is advocating for HB forty-one oh four to bring stability to our communities. By restoring local control, we can prevent unchecked rent hikes and protect renters' rights. We employ you to introduce a resolution in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Scott Stymley.
Scott Stymley, Ward Five. The thing that I am bothered by is the fact that these roads are are not up to date. They're sinking lower and lower every day. The leaves are in the street, not on the parkway. They blow all over. The city comes and picks them up and they're right back in the street again. I've seen people do it. And I've said it, and it's like, well, too bad. I just saw about a head-on collision one day because the leaves were raked in the street on both sides of the street. Now, I would, somebody's gonna get killed before before anything is done. And for them to say that, well, it's my right to park there, that's not their right. That is a city's property. It ends at when it's parked in the street, until they start handing out citations, they're gonna continue to do it. I've only seen a couple that have put them on the parkway, everybody else puts them in the street. I've seen people blow them to the street, in the street. And I've seen the people on corner lots, they've got them on one side and they got them on the other side. So they've got an advantage. And until this is, until they start handing out citations, they're gonna continue to do it. And it's a safety hazard is what it is. Yet, we find ways to spend the money that the city has rather than to update the roads. And some of those storm drains are so cotton-picking low, it's dangerous to to try to get them up and clean them out. And so I just called the city, they were supposed to be updated years ago, and they're still, every time they come around, they fall them in the drain, they said, or into the street, they said, we will be out in the spring and relay that. Spring of what year? I think you get my message. I'm not real happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna try our remote public commenter, William, again. William, if you can unmute, you press star six. We'll try one more time, William, if you can press star six, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Yeah, thanks for this. I kinda jokingly wanted to say, how many up there are having their coffee and tea or drink next to them? But anyway, what I discovered that the trees are making leaf tea. And leaf tree rains and the leaves fall, so there's a cycle of Mother Nature that it's happening. But I know Scott just talked about the leaves in the street, but ideally, everybody's got a lawnmower and the leaves are gonna benefit the soil, and the soil's gonna be benefited from the remains of leaves being particledized and put back into the soil. So the leaves, so the trees can develop their immune systems as Mother Nature intended. So I just kind of, again, I thought, oh, yeah, this leaf tea process is going on, I notice, you know, again, we we say may the rains fall gentle on your fields, so it rains and then the leaves fall, so there's a cycle here. Again, the oldest trees on earth are, you know, the ones that have not been raked. Again, who would think of going out to Funkstrow and taking those leaves away? Anyway, we all know about additive manufacturing, every fall, Mother Nature's doing additive process, it's adding, adding, adding to the soil. But then we're subtracting, subtracting, subtracting due to, I pray that the council can consider again, the amount that's spent on the city, I call it maid service, cities going out with their vacuum cleaners. Whereas, you know, again, if we were educated as Illinois professors gladly learn and gladly teach, we would rake the leaves out of the street and mulch them and have them go back into soil, thereby preventing Dutch elm disease and whatever becomes because the trees are being deprived of their nutrients. So anyway, again, the money that could be saved, I think at one time, I might have mentioned before, five hundred thousand dollars. But if the city could make that known to the public, again, what would be more important, make known to the public the benefits of the leaves and how they're gonna benefit the trees in the long run. I know we wanna have lawns, but at the same time, there can be a compromise. The majority of people have lawnmowers and they could be, again, incorporated back into the soil as nutrients. Let's see, the last thing would be the word eco, economics and ecology, they have the same root. And the ecology came first, so the ecology should determine economics, so the point of this is, again, Mother Nature does nothing in vain, there's every action has a reaction, so when we're messing with the reactions of removing, again, subtracting the process that Mother Nature's adding to, it could be detrimental in the long run. There wouldn't be a harbor of gloom and doom, but Mother Nature knows best and all of us older generation, it's not best, it's not good to most of Mother Nature. So again, I guess if the city could again come forward with with the amounts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all we have for public comment.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item seven L.
Seven L, okay. Anybody else? Okay, Councilmember Bowlin? Just wanna be sure you don't have anything to pull.
Well, thank you, no, I don't have anything.
Okay, all right. All right, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven L?
I'll move.
Okay, move by Councilmember Hendricks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Becker, and if you can go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Bowlin, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the consent agenda passes with the exception of item seven L, and now we're gonna move on to item seven L, Councilmember Ward.
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to the ordinance as it's proposed. The amendment is to exhibit A, and what I'd like to do is propose that item A on exhibit A states that the PSCRB shall consist of eleven members. And in item C, that two of the eleven members shall be youth members. So we would change the number to eleven. And we would strike the proposed shift from shall to may and just stick with shall. I don't know whether I need to move the adoption and then we amend it or what the protocol for that is, but I can explain also my reasoning for it in whatever order I need to.
What do you think?
Yeah, yes, I think the appropriate protocol would be to move to amend, have a vote on the motion for the amendment. And then if the amendment is approved or not, then you vote on the change, the proposed change itself, so it's two votes.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Who brought this recommendation forward?
The PSCRB.
Okay, I have attended some of those meetings, and they have been discussing for a long time about the difficulty of finding students.
Point of order, could we like make the motion and have some explanation of why the motion is and then have discussion?
Sure, we can.
Having discussion before or after, you have not yet made the motion, I just wanted to know who brought it forward. So if it's the PSCRB, then my question is the answer.
Okay, all right, so do you wanna?
So I've made my motion.
Yeah, motion to amend then?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, but I also am seeing headshakes in the audience from PSCRB members that they did not bring this forward, so I'd just like clarification on that as well.
Is there anybody here who can speak to that, Michael?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Michael Hurt, I am the staff liaison for the PSCRB. The, yeah, we did bring this forward. The recommendation was to have the two youth member seats be occupied by either adult or youth members. We've had great difficulty in getting youth members on the board, so that was the reason we brought it forward. Just to free up the two seats.
Who's the we?
The PSCRB.
So the PSCRB, it sounds, according to the minutes, voted for it, but whose idea was it? I think that's what Councilmember Bowlin was asking.
Is, Councilmember Bowlin, is that what you're asking, whose idea it was, or?
Well, I was interrupted. I was beginning to say I have attended some of the meetings. And the members of the PSCRB have expressed frustration about filling those positions specifically because it says for youth. Now, they, it was my impression that they wanted to rectify the situation as a group.
Okay. All right, anything else to add to that, Michael?
No, this was a group decision, it wasn't an individual one. And to rectify the situation at the lowest level, they decided to maintain the number of people on the board, but add flexibility to the two youth positions since that's where the difficulty was.
All right, sounds good. So we have a motion on the floor, so do you want to explain now then?
Yeah, I can completely see the desire to increase the number of voices on the board, and I have no problem with that. And having more voting people on the board seems perfectly fine to me. But I do think that there was a reason why the youth positions were created to begin with. And I think that even though we have not as a community recruited people and been able to successfully fill those positions in a consistent way, I think the idea of having youth voices on that board is still a good one. And so it seems to me like a way to resolve and have both of those things is to simply increase the number of positions on the board for adults, but then also maintain those two positions for youth so that we can can work harder to recruit people and still have the opportunity to have youth. If we fill those positions with adults, then we automatically eliminate for a term of one to three years, I guess, the possibility of having youth. And I think that's a loss to the community, and I think it sends a signal to the youth that we don't really value their voices. And so to me, the best way around it is to, let's do both. We don't have to make it an either-or kind of situation. We can have the voices of adults, if we have people who are clamoring to be on the board, wonderful. Let's take their energy, but let's not rule out the possibility and do that at the risk of losing possible youth who we could recruit to be on that board. So that's my thinking behind it.
Okay, so so item, which item were you talking about?
So on exhibit A, which is the second page of the ordinance, item A would simply say the PSCRB shall consist of eleven members appointed by the mayor. And point C would say two of the eleven members shall be youth members and so forth.
I have another question. It sounds to me that that's, that's the original way it was set up. Maybe I'm mistaken, but.
Can I ask a clarifying question to maybe help Donna's question? Originally, was it nine total? And then we converted two of the nine to youth, so, or was it eleven total?
I think it was eleven total.
No, I think it was nine total, yeah, and then two of which were youth members. Okay, Councilmember Monty and then Kearns.
I mean, I too had heard, you know,
I mean, I too had heard, you know, of the um challenges recruiting youth members. And I think, you know, the members and the community and and you have put forth a very good effort to recruit these youth members. It seemed to me like this is a good compromise to simply change the word um to allow for either. Um when when I heard about the challenges, you know, all of us, I'm sure get invited occasionally to go and speak to classrooms. And I personally talked to two different classrooms of kids in the last two years to try and generate interest. And demonstrate that that is an opportunity for involvement. And you know, I was not successful either. So I mean, if the P S C R B um has consensed. That um you know, it makes um sense to them to allow this to be either or. I I'm I've personally, I want to respect their their choice and and their recommendation. Um because I know there there's a lot of effort been placed around finding these youth members in the spirit with which the um. Decision was made to include them.
Councilmember Kearns?
I just wondered if this. What what Councilmember Ward is suggesting, is this something that the board talked about? Was this an option that you came that you thought about and then decided against it? Or was it just not something you thought of? I guess I'm I'm wondering like more how you if if there was any other, if there were other options. And then you kind of whittled it down to this one being seeming like the best.
Okay, Councilmember Ward?
So I I guess I'm confused because on the first page of this ordinance, the fourth whereas. Says whereas the P S C R B further desires to expand its membership. By two full-time non-youth voting board members, increasing the number of voting members from nine to eleven.
It's probably an error.
I think it's an error.
I mean, that's it, it's right there.
Okay, well, should we maybe table this?
Yeah.
To the next meeting because this is not the.
Yeah, I think it was a Scrivener's error.
Yeah. Okay.
When we pass this on to uh the person to put it into peak.
Yeah.
I think they misunderstood what we were saying.
I'd be willing to to um to move to table it. I I would like to say I'd like to encourage the P S C R B. To take another look at this and consider the point that by by changing those two positions. Those youth positions to May, you're effectively shutting the youth out if they are filled by adults. And if you simply increase it to eleven members, you get what you want. And you don't shut the youth out.
We have a meeting on Wednesday and we'll bring that up on Wednesday.
Yeah, and and I think that's, you know, um. I know as the person who's making, you know, responsible making those appointments, it has been incredibly difficult. Uh to to find uh you know, people who are willing. Uh because you you have to consider uh the fact that for one, you know, it's. It says, you know, from age sixteen to twenty-one. Um you know, i- if if you have somebody, for example, who who is in in college. Uh you know, may not be here in town. Uh you know, last year of high school or something and then moved somewhere else. So there's a number of different things, especially an appointment for, I think they were appointed for one year, right?
One year.
Yeah, one year. So I mean, in in one year, you barely have the time to figure out what is going on. Um so I I think that's also another one of the the challenges. So it's not a, I don't think it's an intention to uh. To 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 shut, you know, the youth down. It's just, you know, trying to come to terms with the the reality. That it's just been incredibly uh difficult, you know, to to fill those positions. So. Um so yeah, so I think, you know, but certainly think maybe we yeah, we table this and then have an additional discussion to fix this Scrivener's error and.
Sure, the council uh person Ward's recommendation, we'll talk about it on Wednesday at our meeting.
Yeah.
Can I just ask one follow-up question? And maybe it's just the ten-year civics teacher in me. Um what are the efforts? Like, what are the connections that we have with District eighty-seven, Unit Five? Of which we're advocating with those teachers to do those sorts of things because Olympia, we select juniors and seniors to serve on our school board. Um and we have a list of twelve that we have to whittle down, interview, make it down to two. And we have kids that are clamoring for those positions. So I'm just interested with a much larger student body. And it's only juniors and seniors at a high school, not sophomores, juniors, seniors, freshmen, sophomore, junior at college. What are those efforts?
At our efforts have been uh pretty extensive between the board members. Uh and myself, I do uh volunteer with the group for at uh Bloomington High School. And we've advertised and uh sought to get additional members there. I think in your case with the school board, it's uh probably the interest of the students is more readily uh available there. And they can make a bigger impact to uh their surroundings, their world by volunteering for the school district. As opposed to, as the mayor was saying, coming on to our board. Uh and taking months, maybe even a year to learn about what's going on and uh what is the jurisdiction of the board? How far do they reach into the community?
Thank you.
Could I have one more clarification?
Sure.
Councilmember Ward, can you clarify when you say may shall? If the option is those two extra, you know, number ten and eleven. Could be either youth, like to be flexible, either youth or adults. Because the terms are, you know, what is it, three-year terms? So if a young person comes along. Uh they can fit in. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm simply saying. Maintain the youth positions the way they are. Keep working on trying to fill them. If there's a concern that. By leaving those, by not having those two filled, it leaves too few people on the existing. Board.
Right.
Then let us simply create two more positions on the board that are reserved for adults. And work to fill those. Effectively, it gives you nine adult members. And then you have the two youth members. And if they aren't filled, then you still have nine adult members. Yeah, I that that's all I'm saying. It 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 effectively gives you the nine members that they're looking for. But it doesn't rule out having youth members reserved for that for spots.
Yeah, I and Michael, maybe you can speak to this, but I I don't think the. I guess the the issue started with wanting to have more adult members. It it was just primarily trying to. Address the fact that we don't have, we're not able to find people to serve in the youth positions.
Right, we have, we have vacant seats uh now for adults. So yeah, that was part of the issue.
So Mayor, we currently have a motion on the floor to table this item. That was made by Councilmember Ward, but we don't have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, but we had the motion prior to that, right, to amend. Do we need to or do we should, yeah, we draw those?
The motion to postpone supersedes the motion to amend. So you vote on the motion to postpone first.
Okay, alright, so is that superstition or?
I could put it to music if you'd like.
I'm just kidding. Okay, so let's uh so we have a motion to to table. Okay, and we have a, so we have a motion to table by Councilmember Ward, second by Councilmember uh Hendricks. Are we using the? The curs?
Is there a date certain?
The earliest date that they could bring it back to council would be February tenth.
February tenth?
Yes, because they've already posted their agenda for um Wednesday. So to follow O M A statute, we wouldn't be able to add. A voting item. They can talk about it under new discussion, but they can't vote on it. And so it would have to appear on their January agenda for voting.
Is that good with you? February? Okay, alright, sounds good. Shall we?
Councilmember Bowlin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so the item passes and oh, one need to announce?
Councilmember Montney.
We are now going to. Move on to the regular agenda. With uh. Item eight A, consideration and action on an ordinance uh levying taxes for the city of Bloomington. Uh McLean County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning in May one twenty twenty-four and ending April thirtieth. Twenty twenty-five in the amount of twenty-two million dollars, three hundred and twenty thousand and three hundred and eighty-four. Dollars as requested by the finance department. And I'm gonna turn it over to uh City Manager Jurgens to. For some introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've gotten through the difficult items on the agenda tonight. So now we'll we'll move to the tax levies. Um uh wanna just again thank the council. We we've got just a very brief presentation tonight. We went through this in some detail when we set, when we held the uh meeting where we set the estimate. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Finance Director Scott Rathbun to run through just a couple of slides. Thank you.
Briefly, thank you, City Manager Jurgens, Mayor Council. Uh tonight, we're before you is adopting the final twenty twenty-four property tax levy. There's really three statutory parts to adopting the levy. The the estimate has to be presented and and adopted. And then uh not less than twenty days later, we have to do the final adoption, which is before you this evening. And then uh we will file that with the city or the county clerk, excuse me, by the last working Tuesday in the calendar year, which is uh December thirty-first. So it's a very important a component of our revenue structure uh and our budget process. This really kicks off the budget process. So over twenty million dollars, you know, for the levy is approximately seventeen to twenty percent of uh the general fund budget. Next slide, please. So this this is an exhibit demonstrating that the holding uh the uh the levy flat, that was what the estimate uh that was adopted by. Council on November eighteenth at twenty-two uh point three million. Uh given that the uh E A V that we're projecting is is going up. About nine point eight five percent, this is gonna result in a um an overall rate uh drop down to nine. Or point nine zero four percent from point nine nine three percent of the prior year. Next slide, please. Um this is just a graphical depiction of the city's rate history. You can see that we range really between one point oh five percent, one point one percent. Uh since two thousand nine. And then, as I just indicated, you know, we're dropping uh from nine point or point nine nine three last year. To a projected rate of point nine oh four this year. So that's an approximate nine percent uh drop. Next slide, please. And then uh just to kind of graphically depict the actual levy uh dollars uh that have occurred uh going back to twenty eleven. You can see we back in twenty eleven is nineteen point one million, all the way up to twenty twenty-four is twenty-two point three million. So over the course of thirteen years, uh we've increased the levy about, it's going to be about three tw- point two million. Um and that's an approximately uh approximate one point three percent annualized increase per year. If you just take that three point two million over the thirteen years. Next slide, please. And then just to give some perspective, um you know, this can vary obviously from from home to home, but the impact uh using that approximate. Uh nine percent assessed increase. So in examples here, we're taking a two hundred thousand dollar house at a nine percent increase. It's up to two hundred and eighteen thousand. Well, our our rate is going down approximately nine percent as well. So you can see in in the examples here, there's a slight drop. Uh in the tax uh that would be realized, you know, forty-two cents per month on that two hundred thousand dollar house, uh twenty-one cents on a hundred thousand. Uh sixty-three cents on the three hundred thousand, but really it's basically even because we're 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 looking at a nine percent um drop in the um. The 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 rate over that same timeframe. So the nine percent E A S uh approximate E A V increase per house is being offset by that nine percent. A drop in in rate. Next slide, please. And go. So uh the library will be presented separately uh coming up, but we'd like to show uh the the com- combination of the city. And library rates, assuming uh that their levy passes. Uh this depicts um the increase for the overall. This is the way we publish typically a combined rate in our budget documents and the audit, et cetera. So you can see for twenty twenty-four um calendar year levy, uh the city rate point nine oh three nine percent. Library point two, let's just say eight. So for a combined rate of one point uh one eight. Prior year was uh one point two nine percent. I forgot to mention that the library is doing a uh an increase in their levy, but their rate is also going down. So uh combining um you know, the one point one eight down from the one point two eight five six. That's a change of point one oh five two. That's an eight percent overall rate decrease. So the city was nine percent decrease. The library is slightly less than that. So eight eight percent decrease in the overall uh combined rate. Next slide, please. And that was quick uh review of uh where we are. So holding the levy uh presented, uh holding the levy adoption uh flat from the estimate. So we'll we'll pause for any uh questions or comments at this time.
Okay.
I have a con- I have a comment.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to um change the estimated levy. From twenty-two million to twenty-three million, four hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-four.
Can you repeat that again?
It's in the ma- it's in the memo. The um the estimated levy is twenty-two million plus. And I would like to make a motion to have the levy adjusted to twenty-three million, four hundred and twenty thousand. Three hundred and eighty-four. That's about a million dollar increase from uh the flat levy.
Okay. Um is there a a second? Do you want to go for a second? Do you want to explain your thinking or? Right? Is there a second? Okay, well, I don't see a second, so the motion dies. Are we, is there an alternate motion?
I'll motion that we um pass it as presented, keeping the levy flat for this year.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, so motion by Councilmember Montney and then second by Councilmember Becker. Any, I know we talked about this last time, so I don't know if there's a need for discussion or. If not, then we can just move on to uh. Voting. Ready, okay.
Councilmember Bowlin, how do you vote?
No.
Item passes with one need to announce, and that's Councilmember Bowlin.
Okay. Alright, well, we're gonna move on to uh item B, consideration and action on two resolutions. Abating property taxes totaling approximately five million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, two twenty-four. And fifty-seven cents, um including one, a resolution approving the abatement of all. Or a portion of the taxes heretofore levy. heretofore levy to pay debt service and certain obligation bonds of the city of Bloomington, McLean County. And number two, a resolution approving the abatement of tax levy for rent payable under lease agreement between the Public Building Commission and McLean County and the city of Bloomington as requested by the finance department. And turn it over to City Manager Jurgens for introductory remarks.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is part of the process as uh Finance Director Rathbun uh mentioned that we go through every year, and I'm gonna turn this directly over to him to briefly present.
Thank you, City Manager Jurgens, Mayor Council. Yeah, this is another housekeeping component of the levy. All of our um our our debt or original ordinances um had components related to uh securing the debt with the property tax levy. It's the most secure form of uh tax revenues. Um investors uh basically prefer to see that, so it's basically included in all original ordinances. I want to make a a point of saying original. Um and so as part of this process, we abate uh any component of uh the next year's debt service that is not going to be paid from uh the tax levy. As an example, uh you know, some years back, twenty sixteen, I believe, you know, sales tax increase went into effect to help pay for the bond for the arena. So that's a dedicated revenue source uh for the arena. Although in the original ordinances, it said we would uh utilize property tax, the property tax levy to pay for that debt. So uh to stay in compliance with our original ordinances, um we we do these abatements every year. I have uh we have a special uh bond counsel, a Chapman Cutler out of Chicago that reviews those with me uh to make sure, you know, we're capturing the information that was originally uh filed with the county clerk. Uh doesn't always match the final amortization schedule, so sometimes those numbers don't tie exactly with the next year's total debt. Um but with that, they review uh those submissions and make sure that we're abating the proper amount. Next slide, please. Oh, it should have been two in, sorry. And next slide, please. So uh with that, I I recommend that we uh that you adopt the twenty twenty four tax levy abatement total for five point two million.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hendrix. Second by Councilmember Danenberger. Taking time.
Councilmember Bowlin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it passes. No needs to announce. Thank you, Scott. And we're gonna move on to item C, uh consideration and action on an ordinance levying taxes for the city of Bloomington Public Library. Um for the fiscal year beginning May one twenty twenty four and ending April thirtieth twenty twenty five in the amount of six million eight hundred and twenty seven thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars as requested by the Bloomington Public Library. And I'll turn it over to uh City Manager Jurgens again.
Thank you very much. And again, I'm gonna turn this over to our library director, Jeanne Hamilton, to quickly run through their tax levy.
And I want to recognize Katrina Parker, the library board president, is with me today, too. Uh you can go to the next slide. We kept our slide short um tonight as well, just um like uh Scott did. Uh so this uh just recaps uh what we're asking for um a six point eight million dollar levy. Um and this is a three point seven six percent increase in the levy dollar amount, but it does result in a rate decrease. Next slide. And so this um demonstrates the two hundred thousand dollar home would pay ten dollars and eighty cents less per year. We do understand that uh the house values have gone up. Uh so for uh if the two hundred thousand dollar house went up to a value of two hundred eighteen thousand dollars, um it would be five dollars seventy eight cents more per year. Next slide. And that's our questions and comments.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hendrix, is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Questions? I know we discussed this last time, too. Okay, I think we're ready to vote then.
Councilmember Bowlin, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, uh the item passes six to three, three three needs to announce.
We have Councilmember Montney, Councilmember Becker, and Councilmember Lee.
Okay. And now we're gonna move on to item D, I think. Yes, consideration and action on a resolution approving the authorization to waive the formal bidding requirements and to approve an amendment to extend the agreement with Iverson uh consulting group uh through December twentieth twenty twenty five as requested by the administration department. And City Manager Jurgens.
Thank you again very much, Mayor and Council. Uh tonight, uh in addition to having the council consider a uh amendment to extend the contract with Ted Iverson, we're going to have some testimonials from some of the staff that have been involved in this process. I believe we also have uh Ted on the line or or on video uh virtually with us as well. So if there are questions for him, uh he could certainly answer those as well. I will say that this is uh the idea of trying to put into place more efficiencies in these lean processes has been discussed by this council for a long time now. And um certainly, Councilmember Montney and uh Councilmember Crumpler and others have been champions of this effort and and supported really by the entire council. I feel like we've made some very good steps uh towards uh what the council's been wanting to see. And I will tell you, it's something that the staff is embracing and that we're really excited about. And I hope you hear and see some of the results of that tonight. Uh so to kick this off, I'm going to turn it over, I think, to Mo's, and he's gonna start with us, and then we'll kind of go down the line. You're gonna hear from everybody a little bit of of the different things that we've been doing, uh what they've been getting out of it, and then we'll end with what's coming next. So with that, we'll go to our Public Works Director, Mo's Ricky.
Thank you, City Manager Jurgens. Before I get into this, I would like to say thank you, and I appreciate each and every one of you. I know not everyone has the opportunity to be able to have a board that invests in continuing the education and giving us the opportunity to go see new and improved ways of managing our department. So thank you very much. Next slide. Excuse me. So uh we're talking about some learning opportunities here. I won't read these to you because I know you can all read and you're probably all much more smarter than I am. However, there's a few things I do want to touch on. Um first of all, uh as we begin to lean into our lean journey, uh I had the opportunity to start that with our visit to the Lean Solutions Summit Conference in September. Uh I was able to attend that conference with two of our other city workers, Josh Hanson and Craig Macbeth. Uh one, it was fantastic to have a couple other peers with me, so we could go through this these opportunities together and have someone to bounce ideas back and forth as we were beginning to learn these different concepts. Uh I would tell you that uh Ted, who's on the phone, uh was also available to us, and as we had to work through different issues or understandings of some of these different concepts, he was always right beside us the entire way. I don't think he ever left us for a minute during that conference. And I have to say thank you for that to Ted. Uh I approached the Lean Solutions program as I do most everything in life with a lot of curiosity, but a little bit of skepticism as well. I think it served me well in the past, and I wanted to continue down that road. Uh the interesting thing about this the Solutions Summit was the fact that we had the opportunity to see the difference between theory that was put forward as well as practical use of the concepts. Uh during the summit, we had the opportunity to listen to a plethora of different speakers who were industry leaders, who had embraced and utilized lean solutions to develop the different corporations in which they had worked in to make them a better working place and to be more efficient. Uh on top of that, we also had the opportunity to visit two different site visits. Uh I won't mention the names, but I will say this much. One of those site visits was to a very high-end technology firm. Uh I think one of their clients was NASA. And another opportunity to visit a industrial area in which had a massive floor unit um and see how some of these lean concepts are being utilized uh in practice. Both of these, obviously, both of these different companies fully embraced the lean solutions. And to actually see the theories that were spoken about at the summit put into practice in real life spoke volumes to me. Um I'm not from Missouri, but I do I'm a bit of that show me state in inside of me, and I want to see things actually work as opposed to just hearing how they work. So it was nice to hear the theory and then to see things brought to fruition through the practice on those two different site visits. Then in October, we visited a library for a full day of learning um with uh my peers. Uh we had simulation exercises. Um but before I get into that, I I just have to once again say, I I know the library's here. Uh every time I walk into that building, what a sense of pride it is that is here in our community. I I I'm amazed by it every time I go in. In fact, I bring family members and friends, so I never have a problem attending a meeting at the library, so it was a good time. Uh as we sat down, uh I looked around my peer group. Uh you can see a picture there. It's a good-looking picture. It's nice. Um and I thought to myself, you know, well, dear old Ted, I saw the simulation he brought. He's he laid it out for us. We're gonna work through to to introduce some of these concepts to the rest of our peer group and to see how they they worked within our dynamics. I thought to myself, Ted, you may have underestimated. I'm looking around. I see the cream cream of the crop here from the city. I think the simulation is not hard enough, and I'd be very interested to see how fast we can smoke this thing. And um what I've I very quickly found out was that Ted knew exactly he was maybe I overestimated a little bit. Um it was, but it was so intriguing uh to watch what I thought was a simple simulation exercise. And as we started to go through that exercise and we worked on it together, as he introduced and him and his team introduced these lean concepts to the entire my peer group, it was interesting in how he took some of the parameters off of us, asked us to work within ourselves using some of the different principles of lean such as transparency, honesty, being present and seeing what's actually going on on the floor. Um the efficiency and to have some of the people who are obviously involved in this simulation, which would transfer to our staff, be proud of what they were producing, right? And as those things came through fruition through this exercise, uh I don't have the numbers in front of me. I should have asked Ted for those. But I could not believe how much more efficient and quick the actual process of our simulation became. I I would have not thought it possible, especially in the short amount of time that we had to 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 do this exercise. So um I had a good time. I think my peer group had a good time during that. I will speak for them. If anyone disagrees, feel free to speak up. Seeing none, they all had a great time. But um it was it was it was a great opportunity to kind of uh bookend those two experiences as far as our learning opportunities. Went to actually go and see everything uh through the uh theory side, the practical side, and then implement some of that with my peer group. It was uh I really enjoyed that, and it helped me when I tried to introduce this into my team. Next slide, please. So departmental pilots, um as you can see, uh some of the different departments that were selected in September um to use some of the priorities are identified were the Community Impact Enhancement Department, Developmental Services, Engineering, Human Resources, Information Technology, and of course, Public Works. I'm not sure why Public Works wasn't first in that list, but I'm taking care of that next time. Again, some of the different concepts we learned and some of the different opportunities for us to work with our team is uh the importance of our communication, uh the cadence of those communications and those meeting cadences, and what you'll see there is a huddle board integration. Uh a lot of this was obviously was all new to me. We tried to pick opportunities within our departments to utilize some of these different concepts and put these forward uh and kind of dip our toes in the water. I was able to utilize uh the huddle board uh with our superintendent of solid waste and our assistant superintendent of the department and and specifically towards our leaf collection this year. As you well know, the weather's been difficult, uh it has not been ideal. Uh however, with our opportunity to utilize a huddle board, it has gone a long way for us to be strategic in our deployment for the leaf collection. Uh I also was humbled again during this experience because I put together the greatest huddle board that had ever been envisioned by anyone in management. And uh within three seconds, they told me they it was not good. And so we went back to the team. I said, well, what would help? What do you think would help? And this is something that we learned uh you know, during our visit to the Lean Summit, uh is go back and look at your staff and ask them for suggestions. Uh in a very short order, they gave me the perfect solution. We did end up implementing, and I have to admit, it was a much better idea than I had. So uh that also spoke volumes to me in regards to the fact that, you know, I think especially when it comes to public works, people see uh a lot of muscles, and there are a lot of muscles down there for sure, right? Uh what people don't always understand is the amount of intelligent individuals we have in that department. Um we have a breadth of individuals who have an incredible depth of institutional knowledge and industry knowledge. And I don't think I'm would be doing a good job as a leader if I did not tap into those different knowledge bases as I started to learn through these lean solutions. Uh it's gonna, I'm gonna continue to get better at that. I do believe also that probably other departments would be able to do the same thing. If we were to turn to the people who are doing these tasks every day, as the lean solutions teaches us to look for suggestions and better ways for efficiencies, it will go a long way. Um I'm I'm supposed to keep this short. I feel like I'm talking too much already. So real quick, I'll turn this over to Melissa.
Thanks, Mo's. Um yeah, so to share what we're doing in um community impact and enhancement, uh specifically for our huddle board, uh every department's doing it a little bit differently. As you can see um on the slide, the example that was provided was how HR has set up their huddle board. In community impact and enhancement, we did ours a little bit differently. Um we do have one department-wide huddle board. Um some departments are dividing them by divisions. Uh we really felt like it made the most sense to do it as a group, as a department, because there is so much overlap. Uh for instance, with um the inspectors, the the grants um team as well as the support staff. So we do have on our huddle board, our metrics are divided by division, what we're measuring. Uh for each of those, it's gonna be a little bit different. So as we've talked more about, um you know, what do we want to see um things decrease, you know? For instance, with our administrative court cases, are there things that we can do from the inspection side related to community outreach, engagement, education, that would possibly maybe help reduce some of those cases? Same thing for um even the support staff and the phone calls we receive. Is there anything that we can do in regards to that upfront communication piece? Um is there something that we're missing and um need to be better informing the community uh related to um the questions that we receive? And would that then help reduce some of those phone calls? So some, those are just some of the things initially um that we started to look at. Uh the huddle board is uh it's just on post-it paper. Uh the reason that we chose paper, and I think all the departments have kind of chosen a different medium, but we really felt like um that was gonna be the easiest to be the most interactive for staff. So it is placed in the hallway on the way to the break room. There's actually a container of markers there. It is really meant for staff to um walk by and interact with it, not just when we have our huddle board meetings, but on a daily basis. A large part of our huddle board is our wins. So um as as Ted often mentions, this is how we know we're winning. How do we know we're winning? So in the things that we're measuring. Um but then also, I thought it was very important for staff to be able to showcase their wins and to have those up there. So we do have a an area for wins. We also have an area for opportunities. What are those other things? Maybe along the way, whether that's technology, equipment, what does that look like? Where do we have some other opportunities for improvement? We also have a parking lot. The parking lot really is meant for, are there topics that you want to discuss at the next huddle board meeting? The huddles are really meant to be fifteen to twenty minutes, and we've got about twenty people. Uh so we wanna, you know, try to keep it as concise as possible. So if there are other topics, we want those listed on the parking lot, so we can make sure that we touch base on those at the next one. And then also, it allows people an opportunity. If they're not wanting to speak up during the huddle meeting, they can go by when no one's there and write on the write on the board what they want to talk about at the next meeting, uh and we can make sure to get to that. And um as I mentioned, this is really um meant to be interactive and a work in progress. So as we move forward, if there are things that um we need to measure that maybe we haven't been, or things that we've been measuring that maybe aren't really showing our wins, then we'll we'll adjust as accordingly. And with that, I will turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm on. It doesn't sound like I'm on, but I'm on. Um so last week, um we met for two days with a multi uh department team charged with looking at the plan review process. Um so on the first day, we spent the entire day mapping the current process. Um currently, we decided to basically pretend it was a new commercial building um that was already on a platted lot, kind of changed some of the parameters, but it emphasizes we have architectural plans and engineering plans that go into that. So currently, there is many as seventeen people in the review process. It's quite lengthy. Um it causes a lot of confusion internally and with the developer community. We realize that when a flow chart doubles back on itself, um the and the processes have to repeat, there's a problem. The mapping activity took hours and the process was concerning, but very enlightening. It wasn't instantly obvious what the new flow needed to look like, but the second day workshop was hours of people making suggestions and group talking through the implications of various scenarios. The collaboration was fantastic. People really appreciated the opportunity to dig in. Uh they find themselves as frustrated as some of our outside customers do. Um so altering the process is basically gonna include a pre-development phase uh with a plan review application process. This will ensure that developers are not spending design money unnecessarily. This will ensure that developers are not spending design money unnecessarily. It does front-load the effort. So we're basically be a part of the scoping um, and identifying what it's going to take to do the project versus receiving a building permit application and then looking at land entitlements. Uh, the new process is generally outlined, outlined enough that we believe we're ready to engage developers, brokers, architects, engineers in a feedback session. We're looking to do that in January. That's one of the many sixty-day goals that we developed as a team. Um, he wanted to do thirty. I reminded him there's Christmas and New Year's, so we got sixty days um, to do that. And there is at least a half dozen um, activities on the administrative level that the team has taken ownership of and will be completing in those sixty days and hopefully has some great things to report to you. The next activity was the third day. Um, this is when the department heads came together, the directors to assemble our purpose. Um, so many companies and organizations do mission, vision, values. Those are helpful. But there's also often difficult for employees to translate their everyday goals and tasks into how they can find celebrations and the wins that they do. So the team broke into groups and shared key words and ideas for that purpose. One group had a phrase that resonated with the whole, making life better for everyone. Directors felt that this phrase could work for each of their departments and divisions. But given that not all of our efforts are for people, we want to make it better for businesses, organizations, future generations, companies. The for everyone may be a little bit, a li- little bit limiting. There's power in that proposition. We figured out that the phrase making life better could be the core tagline. But if we alter the proposition, we could expand the concept. Making life better by, insert your project or task. Making life better through, making life better because of. Uh, it could speak beyond purpose to who, how, what, and why. And individual departments can reference and reinforce the purpose concept, making life better into actionable tasks specific to their department and division activities and goals. This purpose inherently is about improvement. We want better. So the purpose aligns with our organization-wide process improvement culture we are working to develop. Uh, just as our desired plan review process frontloads time-consuming and variable-length activities. Anthony is going to share a recent process alteration that they uh, employed in the arena.
Thank you. I'll keep this brief as we're running out of time. Thanks, Moes. Uh, so uh, the uh, simulation Ted did kind of really hit home at the arena where you have a lot of processes that are point A to point B to point C. Um, security and food and beverage have always been two areas the arena has had struggles with just because it, its footprint is smaller. Uh, so something we've been wanting to try in, in security for a while is trying to re-change the process. During the simulation, Ted about, Ted talked about moving your slow part first, uh, so that you can do your quicker items later. Uh, so we've always scanned tickets and then you enter the metal detectors because that's what kept more of the concourse open. Uh, we're always worried about footprint. Well, we decided, you know, if security walking through a metal detector, getting wanded is our slow part, let's see what we can do to push that part forward, get that closer to the doors. And then ticket scanning, which is your fastest part, put that later in the process. Uh, so we said, okay, we have two hockey games before REO Speedwagon. Let's kind of work out the kinks and just try it. Because Ted says sometimes you gotta get a C before you can get a B and then maybe an A later. Uh, so we, we bit the bullet, moved the metal detectors, uh, re- repositioned our wands and uh, moved those forward for two hockey games and moved our scanners back. You can see the picture of, of the redeployment of staff. And this really, the way we moved it, it didn't really end up taking that much more of the footprint of the arena up. Uh, and it made us almost eighty percent faster uh, getting into the arena. REO Speedwagon, which had forty-five hundred people, we never had any measurable lines at all throughout the night with seven entry points. Uh, which would never happened in the old setup. Um, in a sixty-minute interval to get in, our busiest metal detector would get about four hundred and eighty people. Uh, during REO Speedwagon, we had some that were able to get seven hundred and thirty in in less than forty-five minutes. Uh, so the process worked. Uh, kind of the next one to tackle is food and beverage. Uh, Ted did stop by with city manager Jurgens and uh, deputy city manager uh, Tyus last week to kind of talk about some of his thoughts on speeding up food and beverage. So that's kind of our next, our next one to tackle. Uh, so I'll pass it over to Josh.
Thank you. Next slide, please. All right. So return on investment, we've heard a lot from the department heads here around me um, today about some of the things that they've learned over the last couple, three months that we've been fully working with Ted. And really, you know, expanding our scope in terms of what we want to do from a lean standpoint. However, return on investment is part of our overall strategy as we move ahead into twenty, twenty-five and beyond. We did want to mention several opportunities though that we've already realized as part of our pilot efforts. The first one actually ties back to what Kelly was talking about regarding plan reviews. Just as much as there is an economic development component, we also work closely with engineering. And so the way that that processes work currently is we do have an in-house staff member who does the work. However, when there is extra work to be done, we do outsource that work with a consulting firm. We were able to reorganize some things around and cross-train someone internally so that that hundred thousand dollars that we had earmarked for the next budget year, we will no longer need. So that was one of our big wins. Another one was actually in, within HR. We did have a part-time employee who um, recently left the team. And as a result of, of that, we did something similar where we were able to redistribute the workload. And as a result, her work was able to be absorbed by the existing team, so we didn't have to replace um, her position. So as we move forward, those are both things that we want to continue to do um, at a broader level, but we did want to highlight those for the group.
Thank you all. And again, I'm incredibly proud of these staff members and, and all the others involved. You know, it's, sometimes it's an oxymoron to think of government and efficiency, you know, next to each other, but I really, and I know this council does too, I really want us to become that shining star in, in the government body that everybody's looking to because we are so efficient and we are so lean and we're doing things the right way. And the staff is right there with that goal and that mission. So I am, I'm very proud and very happy that the council has, has put the resources behind that. And that goes to the next steps. The action item tonight is to approve a contract extension for a year. Uh, Mr. Iverson, who's a- again, on the, on the virtually with us, has agreed to keep his rates at the same rate. So this is basically just an extension of time. Again, we think we're going to continue to see a lot of return on investment with this and um, appreciate. Uh, we'll come back with periodic updates. This is, as I, I said this morning in staff, this is spreading like a virus, but a good virus. This is going throughout our organization. And we are going to continue to foster this and make this grow. So again, uh, very proud of our staff and very thankful to the council for their direction and for their support of this. And any of us are happy to answer questions as is uh, Ted who's on the line.
Okay, uh, council questions? Okay, Councilmember Bowlin, any?
No, I don't have a question.
Okay, all right.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Becker, second by Councilmember Crumpler.
I just wanted to make one comment and um, first of all, I, I love Kelly's comment that, you know, it's frustrating for staff as much as it, as it is those we've served and your stories have been uh, wonderful. Um, and Jeff, though, I, I want to call you out and, and just um, thank you for your leadership. I mean, you, you took a class in a pioneering way about eighteen months ago that put all of this in motion. And your leadership in this is um, is obvious and you can just feel the positive energy and the optimism in these stories today. Um, so I, I just wanted to personally thank you for your leadership in this effort.
Well, thank you uh, very much for all the work that you're, you're doing. I want to make a, a quick comment to um, you know, what Anthony said about moving your slow parts first and then the quickest one later. I actually experienced the same thing at an arena in, in uh, Memphis, you know, for the Memphis Grizzlies. And I noticed, you know, when you said it, I was like, oh my gosh, yeah, that, that's exactly what they did because they had the uh, the metal detectors outside and let people in first. And then they did the ticket scanning right after. So I think you're right on track as so the rest of you are. I think I'm, I'm really excited to see that we're going to uh, try to do things in a more efficient way, which will be very helpful as it seems like based on the, the tax levy tonight, we're gonna enter into a leaner year. And I think uh, you know, this is the, the best way for, for us to uh, to, to adjust to that. So I really appreciate it. And, and again, Jeff, uh, thank you very much for your leadership on all of this. So looking forward to uh, how much more we can do. Right? Thank you. Oh, yes. Um, I got so excited. I'm just like, ready to go. Uh, yes, I think it's time to vote. We had a motion, right, by uh, Councilmember Becker and, and then uh, Crumpler? So let us vote.
Councilmember Bowlin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, motion, motion passes unanimously. So, thank you all. And now we are going to move on to city manager's discussion.
Thank you very much again, Mayor and Council. Uh, if you can pull up my report. I was gonna start again with a thank you to the council on the, and the next slide, Phil. Um, the weather is actually clearly getting colder out, a little bit nicer today, but man, there were some cold days last week. And you get into those temperatures and you think about the people that are homeless in this community. And I truly want to thank the council for taking action early on a few months ago to pave the way for us to waive some rules so that more individuals can take advantage of the safe harbor at the uh, the Red Cross. Or I'm sorry, the Salvation Army and the, the other opportunities that they've offered there. Uh, we are seeing more increased people taking those opportunities. Um, hearing that there are still more, you know, obviously homeless people within our community. But I am proud that this council took action so that we could start to open up and we could have more warming centers within our community. And this is an issue we continue to work on. We continue to have conversations and not something that we've forgotten about. Next slide. The, the map for the leaves is a little bit like a, a battle map. And um, the blue here is only a little bit larger than it was the last time we met. And the blue is the second round of us collecting leaves. We still have to get to all of the red. And I asked uh, Public Works Director Mo's Ricky, why is there still so much red on there this morning? And he said, well, it's, it's because of the weather and the problems that they've been, uh, you know, running into this season. But they are still attacking it and they're still going to get to that. Uh, once they turn all of that red blue, we will have gotten through the entire community for the second time. And then they'll be doing targeted strikes for the third round. So it has not been a favorable season to collect leaves, but they are working hard at it and appreciate all the work that they're doing. Next slide. Another quick update, a few months ago, I mentioned that there's kind of an informal group that's gotten together that's working on uh, the beautification of the Market Street entrance. And uh, we've actually already got some significant progress on this. Dave Lamb from the Parks Department has been working with the state. Um, there's a kind of a raggedy fence that was uh, right there when you first got off the interstate. The state has removed that fence. We've already planted some trees. Uh, this is something that I think we're going to start to see some real difference with, especially with the state uh, making the improvements to, to that street. And the other ideas for uh, additional greenery and, and different things that this group's coming up with. I think we're going to make a tangible difference. And again, this is not by spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a study or, or work or anything like that. This is just uh, people from the community rolling up their sleeves and seeing what they can do to make a difference and, and very appreciative of that and their effort and proud of this effort as well. Next slide. Uh, wanted to highlight there are two upcoming Bison games this weekend. Uh, we, we don't always highlight every time a Bison game is coming. But it's the holiday season and these are going to be a couple of exciting games for the community. So I'd encourage you, you know, maybe let your constituents know, maybe make your friends and family know. On the Friday, it's going to be, it's an elf Christmas theme. They'll have special jerseys that they're wearing and then they'll auction those off and it'll be a good kickoff to the holiday season. And then the next game, I'm told is a kind of a fan favorite for hockey, uh, the teddy bear toss. So after the first goal is made, you bring a teddy bear, you throw the teddy bear onto the ice. And then those are collected and they're donated to a local charity. So a couple of exciting games that we would encourage the community to go out and check this out. If you haven't been to one of these game yet, games yet, they're really pretty fun. They're exciting and uh, they put on a good show. Next slide. And my final slide, this is our last meeting before the holidays. So just pointing out a couple of different things that are coming up uh, in our downtown. One of the ones I really want to highlight is something that we're going to try new and talking to some of the downtown business owners. I think they're really excited about this. And this is the mistletoe market, which will be on December fourteenth. They're going to block off part of the street. Um, and you know, there are other events. There's a holiday market that'll be at the BCPA stocking stuff for Saturday uh, and, and other events going on as well. But a lot of different things going on in our downtown this holiday season. If you haven't been down there recently, it's, it's worth a trip. There are a lot of great stores and restaurants. And would encourage you and your family and your friends uh, to give that a, a try this holiday season. And other than that, just would wish everybody in the community a happy holiday season. Thank you.
Okay, well, we talked about being lean, so in that spirit, you know, I'm going to be lean and just wish everybody a happy holiday. Uh, you know, did the uh, uh, first Friday and the holiday tree lighting uh, on Friday. And I uh, I, I agree with Jeff, you know, a lot of stuff happening in downtown. It really looked beautiful. It was a really uh, wonderful place to be. And I think our downtown staff is doing a, a fantastic job of highlighting some of the great things that are going on and it's expanding uh, this year. So um, anybody else? No, all right.
One, one quick briefly, since Mo's got to show off his good-looking picture. Um, I wanted to follow suit and recognize uh, city manager, uh, Jeff Jurgens here. Who uh, yeah, heroically took on the shoot the puck challenge at the Bison's I- Iowa tilt last week.
Yeah.
And he missed. He missed. But it took, it, it, yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't want to rub it in. He, he did miss, but it took a lot of guts to put a shot that bad on public. And anyone that wants a copy of this, I inadvertently put ten at Walgreens, so I have them up here. I got a Sharpie here. He'll sign it for you. Other than that, thanks. I yield.
I, I appreciate that. You, you'll notice I did not show that video tonight for the council.
You had a good moment.
I very much appreciate that, Councilmember.
Awesome. Um, well, it doesn't look like we have any other comments.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, well, we actually, we have an executive session. Yeah, right. Yeah.
So at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining in the section two C two of five ILCS one twenty and review of closed session minutes under section two C twenty-one of five ILCS uh, one twenty of the Open Meetings Act. So is there a motion? Okay, motion by Councilmember Hendricks. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, Councilmember Danenberger. Um, Madam Clerk, could you?
Yeah, this will be a roll call vote. We've got Councilmember Kerns, yes. Councilmember Bowlin?
I'm going to be stepping out.
Okay. Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay. Um, council will next go into, will not go into executive session. The rule must be clear during executive session. And council will resume the open session meeting uh, following executive session. However, no additional action will be taken except to adjourn regular session.
Regular session. And uh I would need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Hendricks and Councilmember Ward, all those in favor of signing the file by s-